We are prepared to get started again with a public hearing on approving the 2019-20 Annual Public Housing Agency Plan, and we'll start with disclosures amongst the council.
Staff.
Staff. Staff?
No public.
Staff.
Ms. Pierce?
Hi, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, Marjorie Pierce, Housing and Neighborhood Services Director. Every year HUD requires that we submit the PHA plan with our five-year and annual goals. This PHA plan is for fiscal year 2019 through 2020, and are the goals for 2015 through 2020. Currently, just to give you a little bit of an update, we have 6,318 families on our waiting list, which calculates to about an eight-year waiting list still, that hasn't changed, and we have called in folks that either live or work, which is a requirement for our regular Section 8 vouchers, to either live or work in Oceanside. We have now called those that have applied through December of 2010. Once again this year, we were designated as a high performer by HUD, and we were awarded 15 new VAS vouchers, which are specifically for veterans that are case-managed and referred to us from the VA, and 45 mainstream vouchers for non-elderly persons with disabilities. We have entered into a housing assistance payment contract this year for 25 vouchers at North Coast Terrace, which was completed in August and leased up by December 31st of 2018. That's your update, and with that, staff recommends that the Housing Commission recommend that CDC adopt a resolution approving submission of the 2019-2020 Annual PHA Plan to HUD with the inclusion of changes made to the PHA plan as a result of public comments.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. If there's anyone that would like to speak on this specific item, please come forward. Seeing nobody, we'll close the public hearing. Councilmember Sanchez?
Move adoption.
I just wanted to make a comment. We've gone from 18.8 million up to 19, almost 20 million that you're responsible for.
That's correct.
Does that feel heavy on your shoulders?
Always. What's more heavy is the people that need our assistance that come in every day.
Yeah.
That's true. It's just a great job you do. I know there's a lot of people out there appreciating what you do for the, especially the voucher programs in the Section 8. Thank you.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote. Motion approved, 5-0. Item 23, which is a public hearing for the approval of the 2019-20 Housing and Urban Development Program budget. You're not Cecilia.
I am not Cecilia. Cecilia sustained a somewhat minor injury, but it took her out of commission for the week, so I'm filling in for her. This next report is a little bit more complicated because it sets the groundwork for what the city plans to do with its Community Development Block grant funds, the home funds, and other housing-related funds. Also, we don't know the exact amount of money that we're going to receive, so we prepare this plan as if we're getting the same amount as next year. When we find out what the ultimate amount is, it doesn't vary drastically. If it did, we'd come back to the City Council, but otherwise, we equally spread the funds and adjust either downward or upward as appropriate. So, basically, this is another HUD requirement that we submit and go through a public outreach process, and, like I said, we are anticipating to receive approximately 1.394 million in CDBG funding, and additional 53,000 in CDBG income. For those who might not be aware, that would be like rehab loans that we've paid, and they're making payments back, and we anticipate $53,000 to be paid back over the next fiscal year to us. And then 581, 756 in home funds is what we expect. Per HUD regulations, the CDBG public service funds are capped at 15%, which is approximately And many years ago, we received quite a bit more money in HUD funding for CDBG, and that has dwindled down over the years tremendously. And so the council adopted a policy that they would fund only the programs that were offered in our resource centers, recreation centers, and our senior centers. So basically, what that means is that we would recommend continuing funding the after-school programs, particularly for our at-risk youth, and a good chunk of money to our senior citizen nutrition program. We also have a neighborhood revitalization plan that we allocate $15,000 for planning and administration. For those of you who may not know, that revitalization plan carries from Crown Heights through San Diego Street up to Lemon Street, I believe it is, in the East Side neighborhood. We are not bringing forth any capital projects right now until we know what we have. Most of the capital projects, first of all, we try to address eligible city projects that might be eligible to be done with CDBG funds and otherwise. Some other nonprofits that, for example, the Boys and Girls Club had severe sewer issue and asked us for funding, and the council approved that, so it's money that we hold in contingency for those types of projects. The city uses local funding to support the Alliance for Regional Solutions, which funds through them the various homeless shelter programs. We also have a housing rehabilitation program. It looks like we're starting to get some loans over the time of the recession. We reduced the amount of money that was being dedicated for that program because folks just weren't asking to refinance or get additional debt against their homes during the recession, but we continued to have a healthy mobile home rehab program, which was a grant program up until recently when the council approved it to be a grant/loan program. So we still give a $6,000 grant, but if there's work that has to be done to meet code beyond that, we will loan mobile homeowners the balance of those funds and put them on a payment program. We also have received a $3.5 million loan through the Section 108 Loan Program to build Fire Station 7, and out of our CDB allocation, we are obligated to pay this year approximately $281,000, and that was a 20-year loan, I believe. So with that, the Housing Commission was presented the plan at their meeting on February 26 for discussion and recommendation to the council to approve staff's recommendation, which is to hold the hearing based on the testimony and evidence presented at the hearing, and after conducting the hearing, the council shall adopt, modify, or deny the recommendations contained in this report. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak on this item?
Mayor, councilmembers, Jimmy Not127, Sherri Lane, also Senior Citizen of the Year. I would like to speak on behalf of the senior citizens and thank the council for your continued support for senior services, including the senior nutrition program. Thank you.
We'll close the public hearing, and Councilmember Sanchez?
Thank you, and Club 55. Yes, I wish we had more, because we definitely have the need. I'm going to go ahead and move approval. Thank you.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote. 5-0. We'll go to item 24, which is a variety of actions regarding maximum building heights. We'll open the public hearing and start with disclosures.
Staff only. We've received quite a number, two or three anyway, memos and emails.
Staff and memo. Staff, members of the public, and members of the development community?
Members of the public, especially concerns about going beyond the height limitation.
Staff and members of the public.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. Last November, the City Council directed staff to reevaluate existing ordinance provisions for building height exceptions. The council's action was prompted by community complaints over projects which had benefited from height exceptions and resulted in the construction of large rooftop structures, some of which included living storage and utility spaces. The proposed text amendment before you this evening is intended to, I apologize, set forth regulations for exceptions to base district height limits, only when necessary to serve required functions to operate and maintain a building, access rooftop deck areas, screen mechanical equipment, and contribute to the building's aesthetic design. Secondly, by the City Council's action in adopting a resolution, the City Council would establish the amended zoning ordinance text as part of the local coastal program following certification by the Coastal Commission. Zoning Amendment 1901 and local coastal plan amendment provisions would, in fact, replace existing regulations with a new set of standards that currently reside under Section 3018 of the zoning ordinance. It will also establish two different procedural review paths. One, that would be incorporated as part of the building permit process. It would be a ministerial nondiscretionary type of review without a public notification that would allow for very limited exceptions to be incorporated as part of single-family dwellings. This will ensure streamlined and clarified permit process for those single-family dwellings that would be in compliance with the development standards, with the exception of a couple of items which I will note in my next slide. The second procedural review path involves structures that are subject to discretionary review. This particular procedure would allow for a slightly wider range of height limits exceptions for projects that are evaluated through the public review process. In both instances, for the nondiscretionary as well as the discretionary review process, any and all structures would not be allowed to exceed the base district limits by more than 10 feet. For single-family dwellings subject to ministerial review, only elevator and stairway enclosures that would be limited to the minimum code requirements would be permitted, and, secondly, chimneys, antennas, and roof vents. No height exceptions, which are currently permitted under the zoning ordinance for HVAC or other mechanical equipment, have been included as part of this proposal. In addition, staff is recommending that rooftop decks be set back five feet from building perimeter in order to eliminate some of the impacts to adjacent residential area privacy that may be caused by having rooftop decks included as part of the overall design of a structure. The second procedure that captures all other structures that are subject to discretionary review and public notification could potentially allow for elevator and stairwell enclosures to exceed the base zoning district height. Would also potentially permit chimneys, antennas, roof vents, and utility structures to be constructed, heating, ventilating, and air conditioning units, and similar mechanical equipment, as well as potential exceptions to permit architectural design elements to be constructed. The total coverage for all structures would remain as the ordinance currently stands, not to exceed 10% of the roof area upon which they are situated. Public input on this amendment was received through stakeholder interviews that were held in January of this year. We interviewed residents, community group members from the OCNA, as well as design professionals. In February, we took this proposal to the Planning Commission, and the Planning Commission approved and forwarded a recommendation for City Council approval unanimously. At the Planning Commission hearing, and shortly thereafter, we received some written communication, which is part of the record and has been included as part of the packet that was forwarded to you, and staff is recommending a clarification to the legislative draft, which is shown on the screen, that would clarify that elevators and stairway enclosure dimensions should be based on the minimum building code requirements and architectural compatibility should be considered for structures that are subject to discretionary review. We also like to mention that as part of the modifications that are before you for amendments to Text 3018, we will also need to update Article 10(c), which is currently pending before the Coastal Commission for certification, to ensure that there's consistency in cross-referencing between the two. Staff recommends that the City Council introduce an ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance provisions for exceptions to building height and adopt a resolution requesting California Coastal Commission certification to establish the amended text as part of the local coastal program. I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
This is a public hearing. Are there any members of the public?
We have five speakers. First speaker is John Bickerton, to be followed by Sally Bickerton, to be followed by Stephen Sandberg.
Good evening, John Bickerton, South Clementine Street, Dipmar Street, Nevada Street, Grant Street, Stanley Street. These are some of the 3018 exceptions to height that have created discontent in our neighborhoods. No local coastal city from La Jolla to Dana Point allows for this type of exception. Unfortunately, I believe the elements that created these problems are still present in this new amendment. Page 2, project description, Part B, the last sentence states that in all districts you may exceed the height by 10 feet. Why do we need 10 feet above the height limit? Page 3, discretionary review, item 2, utility structures. What's a utility structure? Let it be noted that Grant Street and Stanley Street property exceptions were approved because they needed a utility structure for screening mechanical and protection of stairways. Page 3, discretionary review, item number 5, states that you're allowed 10% of the roof area. So, on a 5,000-square-foot lot, this allows for a 225-square-foot or 15-by-15-foot utility structure? And page 5, discretionary review, the first sentence states, "Staff recommends that some flexibility is afforded to the decision-makers to evaluate the appropriateness of requested exceptions, as is currently the practice." I'm concerned. We've seen the current practice. We don't like it. Except for the 10-foot height allowance, the elements in the ministerial review of this amendment are a step in the right direction. However, the elements that have led to our residential problems, 10-foot additional height, 10% of roof area, utility structures are still here. So it appears the path is there. Will the outcomes be the same? We need assurance that it won't continue. So I encourage you to direct staff to modify the document to state, "No exceptions to height for single-family residential uses." Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Sally Bickerton. I'm a 40-year resident and homeowner in Oceanside. Excuse me. I appreciate the efforts of the Oceanside staff who worked hard on the 2018 draft language. I'm encouraged that staff can no longer approve most height exceptions without homeowner-developer applying for variance, but I still feel the best course for Oceanside is to join other coastal cities who allow no height exceptions for single-family homes. A huge group of homeowners and residents shared their concerns about these issues a year ago in August, which led to the council to ask for the modifications by staff. We ask that you ensure that those oversized monster houses with third stories in a two-story neighborhood, or four stories in a three-story neighborhood, so out of character with the surrounding homes, are never allowed or approved again. This could simply be achieved by writing into our ordinance that there are no exceptions to height limits in neighborhoods with single-family home designations, as other coastal cities do. Thank you.
Our next speakers are Stephen Sandberg, to be followed by Maggie Matthews, to be followed by Jane Marshall.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Stephen Sandberg. I live at 202 Oak Street, off the alley, one block north of Wisconsin, directly behind South Pacific Street Homes in Zone 5A. What I'm going to be showing you tonight are pictures of homes that have been built in the last approximately 14 years that used the 27 feet, with 10% at that time was 10% of the footprint. And this first one shows a house to the south of me, taken from my third floor, where I live, off the alley, off of South Myers. We're allowed to go to 35 feet, three stories. If you look at this picture, to the left of the telephone pole is Blue Ocean. The structure in the middle is an elevator and a stairwell, and of course, the ocean to the other side. Here's one to the north of me. This is to the north of me. This is at 216 South Pacific Street. The one below is 210 South Pacific Street. These are huge. The one on the bottom is an elevator shaft and stairwell. 408 South Pacific Street, similar to the other ones, because it was made by the same Same structure. Now, the one on the bottom, the house on the, or the condos on the right, the white ones, they didn't have a rooftop deck. They went directly as high as they could, thinking that they would be safe on having an ocean view. As you can see to the left of them, in front of them, that is not the case. This is what was built. That supposedly is 10% of their footprint. Doesn't matter that they have two stories of ocean view directly looking at the ocean. They decided to be able to take that and take away this man's multimillion-dollar structure and investment. This last picture, if you can see it, there's a red line. This is taken from my third floor, looking out. The red line, the red line is 27 feet. Down below shows the additional 10 feet, and what happens to the ocean view. It is completely blocked. What I'm asking for here is something that has been done to the residents of North Pacific Street. North of Surfwater Way and north to Breakwater Way, the City Council, years ago, decided that nothing could be built above 27 feet, flat, nothing. No stairwells, no elevators, no chimneys, nothing. And that provided the people across the street that can go to 35 feet, like the people on South Myers, myself included, but they always were going to have an ocean view. I'm hoping the City Council will correct this and direct staff to prefer an ordinance that goes through the complete review. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Maggie Matthews, Seaside District. What we're looking for is clarity on the language, so that there are no height restrict, there's no exceeding the current height of 27 feet in residential family areas. What is a utility structure? Anybody want to wager a guess? We really don't know. It could mean so many things, because it's not clarified, it's not specific, and until it is specific, we're going to have folks, whether we like it or not, that are going to exploit that, and as a result, we're going to have homes built in our community that has so much charm and character, and these new homes are going to stick out like sore thumbs. They're going to block their neighbors' views, and we have a chance right now to thwart this by creating very specific, clear language as we move forward. So, utility structures, let's think about that, and let's describe exactly what they mean, so we're able to vote accordingly. But let's keep the 27-foot height allowance just so in our residential neighborhoods. Thank you.
Good evening, Council, Jane Marshall, also OCNA president. We did have the opportunity to meet with both Jeff and Amy. Not as a full meeting because of the time limitations between what they wanted to have done and our schedule. We found that the interpretation of limits, as far as heights and also the utility, were not clear enough, so we, as an organization, could not support it, because we felt it did not do what council directed in November, and that would have been, I have it here, that Mayor Weiss, along with Councilman Sanchez and Deputy Mayor Lowry, asked staff to take the more narrow view of the height limitations, and we felt that this still was just too vague for us to put our name behind it. So I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
No more speakers. Councilmember Sanchez? Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to address this item?
Sorry. Nadine Scott again. I had listened to the presentation very carefully, and I'm still confused. We're hearing the pop-up can be 10% of the footprint. Is that the lot size? Is that the size of the first story, the second story? Also, I noticed you included antennas. God knows we don't want antennas put up on our houses. When I was on the Integrated Waste Commission, we can't get rid of those. They stay as a blight and an eyesore forever, so I'm wondering if, considering you could absolutely remove that, and eventually outlaw antennas unless they're ham, which would be a civil emergency type of antenna. And third, when it comes to multifamily, it seems like there's not going to be any restrictions. I'm in the middle of reviewing a proposed project right now that has to be the ugliest thing most of us have ever seen. They have enclosed stairwells that are enormous. They're almost four stories high. So we need to keep in mind the bulk, whether it be in single-family or whether it be in multifamily, we simply can't allow these extra-height bulk designs. So maybe go back to the drawing board and become more specific on these restrictions. Thank you.
With that, we will close the public hearing. Councilmember Sanchez?
Thank you. For years, the City of Oceanside has basically had a policy through its planning department of stepping back
of stepping back. Obviously, the city of Oceanside gets a lot of its revenue from property taxes. And when properties are able to have a view of the ocean, well, that really adds a lot of value to that property and hence the revenue to the city of Oceanside. We had this stepping, you know, stepping back for many years, as I said. And then we, as a council, decided to have higher heights in the downtown district, to have a cityscape. I believe, I believe at the time, it was Rocky Chavez sitting as a council member who kind of led that charge. I still feel very strongly that we need to maintain those views. For me, those are, those are public views. We don't have a private view ordinance, of course, but we certainly need to ensure that the city property values continue to rise. Recently, I would say in the last, I want to say, six or seven years, these, this limit, you know, this exception of 10% has really gone overboard. I believe what has happened is either it's been a real liberal interpretation of that rule, unfortunately, you know, and possibly by staff, and/or that those that are doing these are not being very truthful about how big these things are. I have, I have filed complaints with the city manager's office about some of these, you know, huge, you know, heights that certainly did not look like it was just intended for an elevator. And in the past, we've actually told people to bring it back down. This has not, we've not been doing that for the last six or seven years either. I think we need to have a real black-and-white line. I think that, that will avoid this interpretation of the rules. I think we've had a few people speak out and say, you know, it looks kind of vague, and what is this discretion part? And I think all the rules should be for everybody, you know, not, not just for, you know, these, you know, homes that are, that you don't have to get special permission from the council, but for everyone. So I would definitely and would rather support that nothing go above 27 feet, right, in residential neighborhoods or mixed neighborhoods. Because some of our residential neighborhoods are starting to see some multi, multi projects, multifamily projects. But even if there are going to be, and I may lose on this, I believe that what we should do at least is have it so that it's, you know, the long, the big part is facing, you know, it seems narrow from, from the back, so that these views are kept, you know, there. I don't think we've talked that this, this is addressed in the, in the report at all. But it seems like, you know, these, these buildings, you know, or these structures above, be it a stairwell or be it an elevator, and really, truly, that's what was the intent, was to have these, you know, very narrow areas, you know, not for building mini kitchens up there or mini bars or anything like that. But, you know, things have gotten out of hand. But we, they ought to, at the very least, be as, the least intrusive as possible for everyone. So I appreciate that staff listened to the public, I mean, to the, to the public as well as to the council. But I would really like to see that we not allow any structures at all above the height limit, which at this point, residential is 27 feet. Thank you.
I have a question for staff that, as Councilmember Sanchez just raised, but also both the Bickertons and Mr. Sandberg have raised the same issue about the 27-feet cap maximum. Do you have a position one way or the other on that?
Mayor and council members, I'll weigh in on that. So just to give a little bit of background, so when we received council direction last fall, essentially, and the way that the ordinance is structured right now, and I'm going to start off just by kind of clarifying a few things, too, that I heard, just to make sure that the record is straight. Essentially, the tact that we took in looking at this issue was to have two distinct scenarios. One was nondiscretionary, single-family residences, which is where we were hearing most of the complaints. And in that case, to be very clear, the only thing that we are allowing up on a nondiscretionary, single-family residential structure would be enclosures for elevators and stairwells is one exception. The second exception would be chimneys, antennas, and roof vents. That's it. And then there's language in there that also makes it clear that you can't have any habitable, habitable space, storage areas, or anything like that. We did not allow HVAC equipment, as was mentioned during Amy's presentation as well, under that scenario. So that, that's, you know, most of the complaints that we were hearing about were what had happened on nondiscretionary, single-family structures. And we think we did a pretty good job of buttoning it down. The second, the second scenario are structures that require discretionary review. Now, that can include single-family homes that may require a local coastal permit, commercial structures, multiple-family structures. So that range of structures is completely different in our mind than a nondiscretionary, single-family. In that case, there's a lot more variation in terms of what typically goes up on a roof, especially when you think about a commercial structure. So that scenario, and those are, those are properties that would go through a public hearing process, unlike the other, the first example that I mentioned. Under that scenario, that second scenario, we did provide a little bit more flexibility in terms of what we would allow out there. And really, the main things that we allowed that we wouldn't allow in a nondiscretionary, single-family is we did provide some language in there that had to do with utility equipment. So that is one distinction. The second distinction is we also allowed for some variation in screening methods that might raise the height above that. And the third distinction is, in that second scenario, we did allow for up to 10% coverage, and that would be for the roof area, as a point of clarification. So yes, that second scenario was more flexible and a little bit more general, but it would also be subject to a public hearing process. So that's the balance there. So getting back to your original question, whether staff would, you know, support a hard cap on 27 feet, I don't think we would really have any, you know, any opposition to that if we wanted to just cap it at 27 feet period. You know, in my mind, I think there may be some, it may be worthwhile to include exceptions for chimneys and antennas and roof vents because invariably, those things do encroach above the roofline in a lot of cases. But, you know, items such as elevators and stairwells, certainly those don't need to be up on the roof. If you want to draw a hard line on those, there are ways to design buildings to put those entrances on the building sides and so forth. It's certainly not as convenient as what we would propose right now, but we wouldn't be objective to that. So hopefully, that provides some clarification.
Okay, thank you. And before I go to Councilmember Rodriguez, I do have one comment in regards to those structures subject to discretionary review. So those would be large apartment complexes, multifamily units, commercial units. Under our current rules, we would allow a structure to exceed the 10-feet height limit, subject to approval of a CUP. I am aware that for those types of projects, the types of elevators that they have to put in are much larger than what you would put in a residential, a single-family residential project, and that those would need to exceed the 10-foot height limit. So I would like to see personally that, that we include in that for structures subject to discretionary review, that they may exceed the 10-feet height limit, subject to a CUP, because that will go through a public process. So they would have to describe and justify why they would need to go above that. But I would like to see that. And quite honestly, I'm supportive of, in the single-family zones, the, to limit it to 27 feet with what you just said, with the chimney. Antenna, I'm not too concerned about, but at least the chimneys and some of the vents to go above, but no elevator shafts or stairwells going above the 27 feet, similar to what we have, what is actually in the ordinance, but we allow the exception. But I'm comfortable with allowing those to occur that way, to limit those, so no elevators or stairwells above the 27 feet. But with this, that, I'll go to Councilmember Rodriguez.
Thank you. The proposed amendment, as written, will have a direct negative impact on the potential to design the aforementioned building types by establishing a 10-foot maximum height exceedance limit for all residential zones within the city, along with the implementation of a restriction. The proposed language fails to address that all elevators are not the same, nor do they have the same height and clearance requirements, and may be required to exceed minimum building code requirements in order to be constructed. Not all elevators, I've had experience with that on properties. You can have a normal elevator, you have a gurney-sized elevator, they're, they're different. The amendment, as written, fails to provide the continued opportunity to request a use permit for features extending more than 10 feet above the base district height limit as currently allowed under Section 3018A of the zoning ordinance on not only residential developments, but also for commercial and industrial uses citywide as well. The strict application of a 10-foot maximum height limit and the inclusion of the wording "minimum building code requirements" within the, without the opportunity to request a use permit for features extending more than 10 feet above the base district height limit has the potential to derail, you know, projects that are, you know, in the works, to include the elimination of rooftop decks, elimination of the elevator from the building, reduction in the ceiling heights, and resulting in non-marketable projects, also HVAC conflicts within the units. We have a community that's relocating from Orange County. They want to retire. They don't want to walk upstairs. They want to live in their home, and they want to enjoy their rooftop deck. And they can't walk all the way up to their rooftop deck, so they need an elevator. And I think for those individuals, they should have the right to freely build a rooftop deck and have access to that rooftop deck. And we should be able to accommodate Americans with disabilities to be able to access that roof. And I think that, you know, removing, having a 27-foot height limit is, is not the way to go. I would not support that. I think that individuals should have the free, highest and best use of their property. And if they need an elevator to access the roof to enjoy their views, they should be accommodated with that. And so that's my two cents on that.
Councilmember Sanchez.
I would like to make a motion that basically takes into consideration what you said, Mr. Mayor, and that is that we ask you the nondiscretionary items, that there be an absolute prohibition of building anything beyond 27 feet, other than a chimney. Or what was the other thing that staff suggested?
The, the three exceptions were chimneys, antennas, and roof vents, that you'll often see popping out the top of a roof, like a sewer vent or so forth.
Right. But these are really small things, right?
Right. We do have to be careful with antennas because there are FCC regulations that also restrict how restrictive a city can be in terms of regulating antennas. So, you know, I can appreciate some of the comments that were made earlier, but I would still suggest allowing antennas as an encroachment, especially as people are increasingly cutting the cord. We do see more antennas these days as well, so.
Right. Well, regrettably, I understand that. But, so that would be the motion. And, and as to the discretionary, the mayor is suggesting the CUP, which would then be appealable to the city council, right? These are things that would come to the council regardless.
It could, on appeal. It would actually address one of Councilman Rodriguez's concerns as well, which was the first point that he brought up in terms of artificially lowering what might be allowed, be required by building codes. So it would address the first issue that the councilman.
Right. But I'm talking about single-family homes.
Right. No, that's, I understand that. Yes, that's just a hard.
So the motion would be to not allow any structures above the 27 feet in residential, for residential, other than the chimneys, the air vents, and the antennas, absolute. And then with respect to the other, other buildings, that would be discretionary, and that would be via a CUP. That would be my motion, then.
And I will second that for purpose of discussion. Councilmember Feller.
The staff was shown pictures of houses up and down Pacific and in kind of the surrounding areas. And that particular house is looking down on most of them. You have that in a single-family neighborhood. I mean, there's a lot of those. I get maybe the front row for 27 feet that's, that's facing the ocean. But there are people on, in an industrial area that are converting homes on Cleveland Street that are 45 feet with roof decks, walk-up roof decks. So are we calling that a residential area?
Well, I think what you're describing would fall into the second category that I described, which would allow more flexibility through a conditional use permit. It wouldn't, based on what you described, be subject to what Councilmember Sanchez was just talking about, which was a hard 27-foot limit in nondiscretionary, single-family areas. That probably wouldn't apply in the situation that you're discussing.
So if you would, please give me some examples of nondiscretionary areas.
Well, it would be anything that was subject to a development plan. It could be something that, in the coastal zone, that required a local coastal permit. It could be a commercial structure. It could be a multiple-family structure, anything that required, would typically require some sort of a public hearing.
And you're talking about citywide.
City, this would apply citywide.
So there could be some, there's some, a lot of homes in this city that are a lot taller than 27 feet. I think, I think that's pretty onerous, or onerous, on the property owners. I mean, if it passes, they have some form to, to get back to, in front of us. But I just, I, I'm not, I don't, we talked about seaside neighborhood here, and I, when I was reading this, I kept thinking, why is it just the seaside neighborhood is, and then I've spotted the word "citywide"? And, and I thought, that seems like, I mean, that, that could be Morro Hills, that could be just about anywhere. And Fire Mountain's got some, some homes there that are at least 40 feet tall. So I, I just, I'm not sold on this personally. Thank you.
So I have a question for staff. Are there, in single-family residential neighborhoods, are there other height, maximum heights other than 27 feet?
Yes.
So the issue would be, so rather than 27 feet, it would be the maximum height within that particular zoning district.
For the base zoning district. I'll change my motion to reflect that.
So the issue would be, you wouldn't exceed the maximum height within that zoning district with the exception of the chimneys, the antennas, or the vents?
Correct.
So it would not necessarily be 27 feet, it's the maximum height within the zoning Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yeah, I think that this is premature. I think that we are going to be taking the private property future rights of many, many owners, and we need to involve them on taking away their right to have a rooftop deck and an elevator to get up to that rooftop deck. And so I do not support this. I think it's premature. I think this needs to be explored a lot more. And, and so I will definitely not be supporting this and taking away a lot of Oceanside's rights for the few voices that came here, which, two of them, I know for sure, they built to the full height and the 10%, and have the electrical room. They just don't want this done to them, and that's why they're here. And I think that's not fair, and that's, that's unacceptable.
Mr. Mullin?
Okay. I, I think you're still going to have some more deliberation, but I just want to make sure. want to make sure that I, that we get in the motion right because we're going to have to read into the record the changes. So there's two different types of projects at issue under this exception. One would be ministerial, one are discretionary. What I'm hearing, the intent of the motion is under 3018, which are exceptions to height limits, that we would strike A1, which is the exception for elevator and stairway enclosures. And then the current A2, for the exception for chimneys, antenna, and roof vents would become A1. That's as I understand the motion. For, Mr. Borrego wants to jump in.
Yes, with one exception, on A1, there is also, that also includes the provision that says that rooftop decks have to be set back five feet off the edge of the roof and that would stay.
That would remain, exactly. Okay. Thank you for that clarification. But with respect to 3018B, which are for discretionary projects, the council would like, or at least the intent of the motion is to add language that would allow an exceedance of the 10 feet with a conditional use permit. One thing I want to point out, though, is that most projects in the coastal zone, even single-family homes, are discretionary because they require a coastal permit and a public hearing. So I think the intent of the motion was a strict 27 feet for single-family homes, but single-family homes in the, excuse me, yeah, single-family homes in the coastal zone are generally discretionary. So did you want to have the strict cap with no exceptions except for the ones set forth in the new 3018A1?
Yeah, that was the intent.
Is that clear to our staff? Okay. Okay, thank you.
Could you, Mr. Mullen, could you repeat that?
As I understood the intent of the motion, for ministerial projects, there would be, the only exception would be the current 3018A2 with the exception of the clarification that Mr. Borrego made. Okay, but for discretionary projects, that there would essentially be a hard cap at the height limit, right, for single-family homes. The issue I'm raising is that most single-family homes in the coastal zone are actually discretionary because they require a coastal development permit. So if I understand the intent of the motion, it would be to carry over that hard height limit to those types of projects.
Yes.
Does that make sense, Mr. Hunt?
Councilmember Kime?
I think I spoke with the public and did a fair amount of reading and I'm concerned with some of the abuse that has occurred with some of these exceptions. So, but I think today I'm ready to move forward with mitigation that's set forth and staff has approved and, but I would also be interested in taking a further step and, but determining what's appropriate because I think it's a fine line we're going to have to walk. I think right now I, that this step that's outlined is appropriate and then we can, I think we could take a further one in the near future.
Thank you. Councilmember Rodriguez?
So I would like to make a, I would like to.
To make a second motion to just approve what staff has come back with and, and nothing more and hold off on making a decision for, you know, every single homeowner in the city of Oceanside that has height limits. I think we, we need to step back on that. So my motion is to just move forward on staff's recommendations within.
So we have a motion, a second, let's vote on that one, then if it doesn't pass, then we'll come back to yours. So we have a motion, a second, as outlined, and please vote.
Can I use this, I'm sorry?
Okay.
Before we vote, this is an ordinance of the city council of the city of Oceanside amending Article 30, Section 3018 of the Comprehensive Zoning Ordinance and establishing the amended text as part of the implementation plan of the local coastal program with the changes that we've discussed.
So these changes are the ones that Councilmember Sanchez and I have made and seconded, which, should that not pass, then we'll come to yours. So please vote.
Motion fails, 2 to 3. Kime, Rodriguez, Feller, no.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
So I'd like to make a motion to move forward on staff's recommendation, who has went through the public process, has gotten feedback from both the development and the local community, and we should take this a step further in the future, but for now, let's move on staff's recommendation.
Okay, I need to read it again, sorry. So this is the introduction of an ordinance to the city council of the city of Oceanside amending Article 30, Section 3018 of the Comprehensive Zoning Ordinance and establishing the amended text as part of the implementation plan of the local coastal program as recommended by staff in the staff report for this item.
I have a request by staff?
Yes, I just wanted to clarify, would that, would your motion also include the provision that was discussed, which would allow an exception beyond the 10 feet through a conditional use permit process?
Yes.
Okay.
Motion approved, 4 to 1. Sanchez, no.
How many do we have on item 26?
Item 26 has seven speakers.
All right, our first speakers, please come down to the podium. Our first speaker is Nick Ritchie, to be followed by Cindy Rocco, to be followed by Noel Breen.
It has to come back, so maybe between now and then, maybe we can change.
Is the mayor going to be here? Okay. Good evening, council members. My name is Nick Ritchie, I live at 133 Sherry Lane. In a conversation with one of our police dispatchers today, I received one more piece of information that convinced me that the city of Oceanside has risen above the level of the emergency as was declared by a council member in September 2018 in regards to transients. I already know that 55 to 60 fires last year in the San Luis Rey riverbed were started by transients, that nearly all, excuse me, that nearly 50% of all calls for police service are transient-related, that 15% of all EMT calls are transient-related, many of those being transported to tri-city emergency, that code enforcement spends huge resources on cleaning up after transients, that two murders, one near-death beating and a near-death assault of a police officer were committed by transients. That new piece of information should concern us all. The dispatcher informed me that in the 15 years they had been dispatching in this city, they had never seen the huge number of calls for service relating to transients. Dispatch now receives 17 to 30 calls an hour transient-related. Can you wrap your head around that? An hour, 17 to 30 calls are transient-related. The transient situation in the winter historically waned in Oceanside, but not this year. The situation held steady more summer-like. Wow, what will summer be like? With the negative impact of Proposition 4757, AB 109, and Martin versus Boise, we understand that OPD is quite limited. However, the city is currently reviewing the CUP of Brother Benno's. This is your only opportunity to positively change the negative impact of transients. Housing will not solve homelessness, accountability will. Please require Brother Benno's to require measurable success, wellness of their clients to receive a conditional use permit. If people are not getting well while receiving benefits, why do they continue to get benefits? After all, this is our city.
And I actually wanted to talk about, I went to the Water Works event out at our water utility program, I mean, plant, and it was just, I want to give kudos to Cary Dale and to Colleen Foster and to all the employees out there because the guy that gave us the tour around, these guys really love their jobs. The guy that cleans our sewer pipes out loves his job, the guy, I can't remember his name, but he was really passionate. And, and then, let's see, oh, so now they're going into pure, you know, pure water, Oceanside, et cetera, at this point. So what I wanted to do is bring up our mayor's challenge and just make sure everybody participates So there was a large cutout of Mayor Weiss there, so I have a picture of that, and, so that was really kind of fun. But what this is, is the mayor's challenge and for each of us to make a commitment, to do some simple changes to our behaviors and also, you can just email them to get signed up, and then, of course, there's prizes. So between April 1st and April 30th, you know, we try to take different steps, which, if anyone's interested in this lower right, it has some certain things like sweep instead of hose off, which is my faux pas. But anyway, I just wanted to say, I just really think we have amazing people, especially, many departments, but I really do respect the job that they put on and it was, it was awesome. It was really educational. So I just wanted to say I appreciate that. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Noel Breen. It seems this meeting may be going a little long this evening, so I'll try to keep my remarks suitably short. You know, in the past few days, there's been a lot of talk in this area in particular about community choice energy and, you know, seeking to do a joint powers agreement, you know, make that happen between Carl's Bed, for example, and other neighboring communities. Even though the idea of community choice energy is admirable, green energy, people controlling it within their own communities as opposed to an investor-owned utility, the more I go over and research the matter and the more I get into it, the more concerned I am. Myth number one, that it is necessarily green energy being brought to table, to the table. What concerns me about that is it's disingenuous to us. What happens is, community choice energy and the aggregate, buying utility, utilities on the spot market. For example, a voice of San Diego cited a case where they bought power from Oregon, hydroelectric power. Well, that's great, it is, I suppose, cleaner than fossil fuel, but Shell up there ended up replacing the power that community choice bought from the hydroelectric plant with fossil-fuel-driven fuels. That's an issue to me, again, you know, I think there needs to be a lot more due diligence on this matter than I see. Another problem that I look at too is even, we're looking at SDG and other utility companies in the state seeking to exit the market as far as selling electricity to folks like us. While you're still under a CCE agreement, you're still going to be dealing with the same people that we don't like anyway, it's just that you're going to be paying a little higher of a price for the bargain. Thirdly, you know, you have tiers set up to where you can go over and pay more if you want greener energy, but it's really greenwashed. They sent, they buy it from places and then they go over and provide it, provide it to us. So folks, I'm just saying, before every, your group and everybody else leaps forward with community choice energy, there's a million questions like that that you should answer. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Sheila Kada, to be followed by Linda Walshaw, to be followed by John Botworth.
We need a dog park in Oceanside. We have a lot of people and it's the third biggest city and we have a lot of little dogs and I don't know why the dog park was shut down, but we need a new one, we need a dog park. So I hope you guys will do that and make us, let us get a dog park. Thank you, bye-bye.
Okay, okay. Ready? I think we're ready. Good evening, council and mayor. Linda Walshaw, not only am I the vice chair of the Housing Commission, but I am also chair of the Oceanside Mobile Home Advisory Committee, representing the 17 remaining Oceanside mobile home parks. I want to bring to your attention on the pending ordinance for short-term rentals that, you know, in listening to staff's presentation at various community events, there are still being, even though the proposed ordinance is going to prohibit them in the mobile home parks, which is great, there are five that are currently licensed and operating in the parks and I want to bring to your attention the fact that this violates the mobile home residency law for the state of California. Section 798.21 says that in order for you to get rent control, which Oceanside has, it must be your principal residence. It states if a mobile home space within a park is not the principal residence of the homeowner, which establishes, let's see, "It shall be exempt from any ordinance, rule, regulation, or initiative measure adopted by any city which establishes a maximum amount that the landlord may charge for a tenant for rent," and that includes 16B. But I know from looking at the park data that's filed every year with the city that these homes are still on rent control, on those spaces. So we need to take a look at that. And also, there is a provision on subleasing that says a homeowner shall only be permitted to sublet pursuant to Paragraph 1 if a medical emergency or medical treatment requires the homeowner to be absent from his or her home, and this is confirmed in writing by an attending physician. And the minimum term of the rental or sublease shall be six months unless management approves a shorter term. And I don't need to really go into this, I'm sure Mr. Mullen can look into the law and make sure that we're not overlapping things and complying with the state law on this. But I wanted to bring to your attention the article about Cavalier and how these homes are being acquired by the parks for use as rentals. And this particular instance was a lady who passed away. She had three sons, one who lived with her. After her demise, her son who lived there was evicted. The other son lives in Texas, he was the only heir on the home. He has cancer and could not come here to sell the lady's home, so he gave his power of attorney to a brother who lives here in Oceanside. The brother then listed the home for sale, they had four full offers on the home, the park ignored all four of them, even though they're required to respond within 15 days, they just failed to do that, and instead they filed an unlawful detainer. So the upshot of that was that this home was pulled out for $5,000. So that's how the parks are acquiring homes from our seniors and we need to do something about this. Thank you.
Our next speaker is John Botworth, to be followed by Nancy Weaver.
My name is John Botworth, I'm a longtime resident of Oceanside. I'm here for CleanEarthForKids.org. We work for children's health, clean air, clean water, non-toxic lands through education. So I want to talk a little bit about chemicals. So I think most of us assume that the chemicals and everything, in the ingredients we use, everything is safe. The EPA protects us and they do what they do and, for most of the time, they do it. But one of the things I've started looking into is the fact that there's over 80,000 registered chemicals in the United States. Over 60,000 of those were never safety-tested, so that's quite a bit. There's 2,000 of them are added every year. The EPA relies on the manufacturer to fund and supply research on their own product's safety. Self-regulation is. Self-regulation is rarely ever works, particularly in something when you're dealing with toxicity. This research that they pay for rarely is scrutinized by any public or any public or peer organization or even science. And the EPA itself, in order to take any action, requires proof of harm. So it's not a question of proving that it's safe, it's proving that it's actually dangerous. So just a couple examples. Canada and the EU have banned over 1,300 cosmetic ingredients. The US has banned or restricted 11. That's part of the problem of not testing thoroughly all the chemicals that are in everything we use. Another example is potassium bromate, which is banned in Canada, China, and the EU because it's a carcinogen. It's legal in the US. It's used in baking. It's to strengthen baking dough. It's totally legal in the US, but this, every place else, this is a known carcinogen. So the reason I want to bring all this up is the fact that very soon, there's going to be some non-toxic Oceanside for the parks and rec that's going to be coming forward. And I want to make sure you guys all understand that just because the EPA says something is safe, doesn't mean it's safe. We have an opportunity coming very soon that we can adopt a non-toxic integrated pest management system to get a lot of these dangerous chemicals, potentially dangerous chemicals, out of our environment. It's not about one chemical, not about one pesticide, it's about just getting the potential, even the potential of these chemicals out of our environment. And one last thing. California ACR 160 is a California resolution for no idling. I ask the city to look at it and adopt it. Thank you.[706.35][706.35](APPLAUSE).
Good evening. That's Nancy Weaver from the Greenbrier Drive, Apple Street, and Oceanside Boulevard. My first time to speak was last time at the city council. We've had three years of issues with, for business owners of two different business complexes in the neighborhood, which is Key Plaza at 560 Greenbrier Drive, just south of Women's Resource Center, as well as Greenbrier Square, with issues with the do-it-yourself car wash customers of Soapy Joe's Car Wash. We've never had a Soapy, we've never had a do-it-yourself car wash model there before. And there are on file, two other, two other issues are with the apartment complexes there at 560 Greenbrier Drive, and also on Apple Street, facing Apple Street. Soapy Joe's moved in adjacent to that. I would like to show you what's been happening in the timeline of working with the 1988 Planning Commission Resolution Number 88-P65 and the conditional use permits. We have had some issues, a lot of issues have been reported to code and planning, but, and they have been acted upon, for violation letters have been sent out, and for non-permitted, not allowed, vacuuming and drying stalls were taken out next to the restaurant. Is that going to show? Okay, thank you. We've had an issue with regards to, April 2017, code is saying that Soapy Joe's has swooped in. They have no plans on record. They have no plans. 2018, as you can see there in the middle, traffic and parking, both said, and business development, thank you, Mr. Borrego, all said that Soapy Joe's is way out of order. They are not, they're very questionable, not really in compliance, and they wanted to call meetings together and review as of a year ago, April 2018. And then all of a sudden, it went dead blank. And what happened is, there was nothing from the city, all May and June, until there was a report from Tila Cotter, which is unfortunate because she's a very good lady. And this is, this is in the public records, that the, there were no emails, nothing since May of 2018 till now. The city email that did come out on July 6, 2018, from traffic was, "Do you think Soapy Joe's will pay for a new layout of the apartment complex parking lot and relocation of the gate?" We have been asking for a 1988 resolution review of all their non-compliances. Now there's a diversion and a distraction going into the adjacent apartment that's never been done, had anything like this done from any other car wash that's been there for 30 years. The next thing, we're getting towards the end, is that on Monday, Monday, February 25th, myself and Wally Stevens met with Mr. Borrego. We submitted 39 signatures of business owners and residents from all four complexes. And then the next two days, three days later, on February 28th, in a phone call with planning, business development, I was told, "The city, we want to give the owner of Soapy Joe's Car Wash the opportunity to do his proposed changes and have the residents try these for several months to see the results." And here is the application.
Please wrap it up.
Warren, I thank you. This is important. We have people's lives at stake. We're almost getting hit every day by their cars.
Okay, you need to wrap it up, please.
I will. This is, this is a substantial thing. We've never had a review, but now they're going to go straight into a mockery of a review. And on the same day, they're going to, they've already, I've been told by city that they're going to approve these and let them do it so we can try hard structure changes of removing a 120 feet of see-through fence, chain link fence, and then put a woodboard fence in, and a black-coated wire gate that's going to put us almost right in.
Thank you very much. You need to finish.
With the Smog Test customer.
Is that it?
There are no more speakers.
Then we will go to item 27, which is a recommendation by myself to, in response to Councilmember Sanchez's request, to replace the council liaisons with Councilmember Keim. So I would move that we make those changes.
Second.
Please vote.
Approved, 5-0.
Go to item 28, which is a request by Councilmember Rodriguez and Keim in regards to the circulation element in Melrose. Councilmember Rodriguez?
With much consideration and due diligence, including multiple meetings with city staff and local constituents, I have come to the determination that the Melrose Gap extension section, North Santa Fe to Spur portion, should be removed from the circulation element for the following reasons. The project comes with an estimated price tag of over $40 million that we do not have as a city. I cannot personally support forcefully taking properties through eminent domain. I spent the last several months digging into the Melrose extension from its genesis until today. Little history, Melrose extension has been in play since at least 1983. The city completed an update to the circulation element in 2012. 24 roadway alternatives, with and without Melrose Drive extensions, were studied at that time. Staff received council direction to leave all future roadways in the circulation element at the time the current element was adopted. In the summer of 2015, staff received council direction to prepare an addendum to the 2012 circulation element to remove the future extension of Melrose Drive. Staff completed the addendum, needed to amend the circulation element in 2017. It was considered by the Planning Commission, but not brought forth to council due in part to the unplanned absence of Mayor Wood. During the 2015-2017 circulation element addendum effort, staff did update the thoroughfare fee program. It was determined that thoroughfare fees would be too high if the city collected fees for all future roadways. The thoroughfare fee program was then modified to defund both extensions of Melrose Drive. In 2018, staff received subsequent council direction not to proceed with the addendum and to continue implementing the 2012 version of the circulation element, keeping all the roads in play. How did this get brought back up? Where, where are we, why are we here today? The Melrose extension was brought back by a 4-1 council vote on 4/18/2018 at a budget workshop where city staff recommended moving $6 million to begin a phase implementation of the Melrose extension. This was to be part of the capital improvements project budget for 2018-2019. Then I get elected, and I see that this is a priority, and I said, wow, this is my district. Let me go to work and figure this out. And so thank, thank you for your patience in this process. In theory, it is not wise to eliminate road pathways, especially ones that have been on the circulation element for three decades. City staff has worked countless hours on this project, and hundreds of thousands have been spent to study it. Although the city is at the early stages of property appraisals, I believe it is likely that they will need to exercise its power of eminent domain to implement this project. That will require four votes. I am concerned about the chances of securing a supermajority on this controversial matter. I personally cannot support forceful eminent domain and taking of private properties. The other very important dynamic is this. All pass and future development in Oceanside, including infill, downtown development, must present traffic impacts because they must mitigate for them. Melrose Gap has stayed in play for so long, so unfortunately, many developments have used it in their analytics to justify future impact mitigation. If it's not officially removed, this will continue to happen. This will unfortunately set back multiple developments who will have to reanalyze and report on mitigation for future traffic impacts. I can personally only speak for myself in that I want this gap removed so that across the board, from city staff to the development community, we could spend time and resources on real mitigations and infrastructure improvements. It's not fair to Oceanside residents if a development project is approved based on future traffic mitigation that will never exist. My vote today is not just to remove a portion of an element, but it's also my promise and commitment to focus on realistic road paths and infrastructure improvements for both the short and long term. I'll be advocating that the remaining funds allocated toward this, this extension, $6 million less some cost, project, be invested into infrastructure improvements like a third river crossing that will provide better fire evacuation and contribute to first responders' Finally, I look at this gap, this portion of it, like a cancer. Removing it is like going into the emergency room to undergo surgery. And yes, it's going to be painful, and there will be a recovery period, but after we heal, we will be stronger than before. So I'd like to make a motion and move forward on staff to prepare an amendment to the circulation element of the general plan to remove the Melrose extension from North Santa Fe Drive to Spur Avenue. Thank you.
Councilmember Keim?
I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight. I know it's almost 8 o'clock, and I'm sure most of you had to work today. My two months on the council so far, I've spoken with many of you in the audience, and I understand how important this issue is to you. It's equally as important to me. I'm going to support the motion tonight. I, I think we need to look at the circulation element in general and really make difficult decisions and start supporting roadways and putting this money to places where we can really mitigate some of our traffic concerns. And I don't, I think we need this portion of roadway. I don't want to take property from people if we have to go there out, and I don't think the $42 million, we can, we can go forward with that cost. But I am concerned with evacuations. I'm concerned as the region grows, not just our city. Sometimes, you know, we're going to deal with growth and traffic from other cities, and I need to make sure that, you know, the city needs to make sure that we are taking these emergency situations into consideration. So I, I'm going to support this, but I think we, we need to take a long, hard look at our circulation plan. And there's going to be some roads that aren't the most popular decisions to make, but I think we need to look at for the overall health of our, of our circulation plan.
Is that a second to that motion?
Yes.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Thank you. I believe what's on the, on the table, and the motion that's on the table is to remove the, the Melrose extension. And I'm very happy to see this. I voted on this, remove it, four times. We've actually removed it twice before, two times. And voted last time was four years ago to again remove it. We do not have the money to build it. There is no way in heck this road, if it were proposed today, would ever pass because it is a development-inducing out where we don't have services. And all it would create would be tons of cross, cross-traffic that would add to our residents' inability to get out during emergencies. So I'm really, really happy to see this. Fourth time voting on this. You know, each time we've said, where was the money going to come from? Truly, now we know that our transnet dollars are limited. It's only, I believe, I believe we were told $91 million, over half of which we use to fix our roads every year. And I understand staff is going to be proposing that we spend even more of that. We just went through a lot of rain, unusually, you know, wet season, and I'm sure you saw what I've seen, a lot more potholes around. We need to fix those. We can't afford to do what, what happened to San Diego with all those lawsuits. So I'm looking forward to hopefully a, a big vote here so that we can really focus whatever funds that we do, we are going to have, and then that includes, you know, SB1 funds, that we really focus on the whole city and what our priorities are. I know staff has a priority list of, of projects, and, you know, we'll, we'll be looking at those fairly soon. But I'm really, really happy to see this, and I'm really happy to support this motion, which is to delete, to delete, excuse me, to remove the, the Melrose extension off the circulation element. Thank you.[1542.91][1542.91](APPLAUSE).
We, we do have a motion in a second on the floor, and before we vote on that, I would just like to say, when you, and I see where this is going, and quite honestly, I personally oppose removing any transportation connections from the cities, whether it's ours or the regional circulation system, whether it's this portion of Melrose, whether it's the extension of Haymar between College and El Camino, the Ardeo Interchange, the extension of Cannon Road, Paula Road. When you remove those roadway segments and connections, in my opinion, you forfeit the right to complain about traffic congestion. Every little connection that is made benefits some portion of traffic somewhere. So I recognize that this is going to pass, given where this is going. At this point, I will be supporting it, just simply because I see where this is headed. So Councilmember Feller?
We're not going to hear the speakers, the 22 speakers.
I was ready to make a vote. I didn't know there was that many. Well, I guess the question to you is, you want us to vote on it now?
Yeah.
All right, we have 22 speakers, so we're going to go two minutes each. Wants to speak, please come to the podium right now.
I'll call, I'll call the speakers in order.
Well, just, just whoever wants to speak, come to the podium, line up, and do your two minutes.
Sidney Rockwell, thank you. The only exception is a modification that 100% of the $6 million goes towards the circulation element for John and David and the department to go through that and not with, with the, the bridge.
That's not part of the motion.
Pardon?
The motion is to eliminate, is to...
No, but there's a spur. There's a, isn't there a, okay, so the budget allocation not to go until there's a circulation element to study the north-south, to even see which, where the bridge would be. I just want the allocation fully to go back to circulation element.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council. I support removing this from the circulation element. This has been a pain in everybody's side for a long time. This thing would cost the taxpayers over $40 million and improve traffic by, I believe the study said around six seconds. So, and it would only be for people traveling through Oceanside, not people who live in Oceanside. But our taxpayers would have to pay for it. I would ask council to look at possibly reopening Jeffrey's Ranch Road. I don't know who's in control of that, whether that's Caltrans or who, but that would be a step in the right direction as far as improving traffic out there. But Melrose needs to go. Thank you.
The project will be costly, as pointed out. I thank you, Councilmember Rodriguez, Keim, Esther Sanchez. Let's get on with this and have the vote. I really support this amendment. Thanks.
My name is Joseph Trugleason, and, and we like to go to Guamee Park a lot. We like to go on hikes, climb trees, run around. We do a lot of fun stuff, and, um, we like to go there a lot. And I don't want it to be ruined.
Thank you.
I am Joseph Trugleason's mom. We live in the Park Lake section of Oceanside, and we homeschool our boys, and they're really good boys. we homeschool our boys, and they're really good boys because we can walk out our front door and go hiking in Guahomi. And we have a pepper tree that this roadway would totally tear down, that my boys love. And we're so grateful for the opportunity to learn about nature because it's so close to home, and we, we, we love our park and we want it to stay intact. Thank you.[651.66][651.66](APPLAUSE)
Allison Brown again, resident of Jeffrey's Ranch. Esther has seen my face over the last, I don't know how many years, 20, almost? Anyway, every time this comes up, I've been there. My folks bought the house in Jeffrey's Ranch. I live there now with their passing. It's been a constant, constant battle. I would like Councilman Rodriguez that this be permanently and forever banished from the circulation element. I, I would love to have this never show its ugly face again. Take a look at the scenery in that area, and then picture a four-lane with a divider road plus reconfiguration of Guahomi Park Road and that huge bridge going over it. Not only is it bad for the wildlife, it's bad for the kind of wildlife, those runners, the people that are in and out of the park. I've been over there several weekends. I have seen the, the horror on the face of the people when I point out where this is going to be and show them the, the, the road plans. And it's, it's something that should never, ever be there. This will irrevocably and irreparably alter this park. It's up to us to save Guahomi. We don't need to pave paradise. Thank you.[760.00][760.00](APPLAUSE)
Leslie Brooks, and thank you so much. And I really appreciate all of your yes votes on this. And so is there going to be like an official declaration that's going to pass through the internet that we all can frame and put on our wall that says, "This is gone"? And, but I only ask that the city would be, really study the area out there and put the money into like some really good roadways. And, you know, I know Jeffrey's Ranch Road, we have an auction coming up on April 3rd for that property that would allow us to have another exit there. So if you wake up in the middle of the night feeling like that's something that we should do, I would really ask you to do it, okay? And thanks again, and thank you, council members.[823.87][823.87](APPLAUSE)
Hello, I'm Bob Nelson. I live in Jeffrey's Ranch. I've sent all council members a couple weeks ago an alternatives at Christopher's suggestion, actually. And I thank you for bringing this forward. I wanted to suggest that you look at those alternatives I had. It partly relates to the North River Farms, but it also gives Jeffrey's Ranch a second exit to Sing Way, and Caltrans would approve that into Ranch View. Perhaps reducing the right-of-way on Melrose between Spur and Old Ranch Road. The city could reduce its maintenance and requirements, and we could get some additional housing. City could save money. The, the options that I've suggested would provide better recreation, save jobs adjacent to Guahomi Regional Park, and provide the community with the second exit for emergency access, and also help reduce traffic more than this short extension would provide. I
My name is Aaron Robert Gleeason, and I love Guahomi. And it's my favorite place to go in the desert. And I like the pepper tree, and we don't want it to get destroyed.
Sorry, I need to gather myself because those are my two boys. I, I'm a father of three, and I lost a baby girl. Nothing in this world is more important than the voice of the innocent and the minority, and in this group of adults, of which all of us are included. Thank you so much for the time that you share with them to speak. Thank you as a father to other husbands and wives, men and women. The most important thing we can do is preserve their play spaces. I grew up in a neighborhood where they pulled out all the parks, put in schools, and then all we were forced to do is play in between the cars. And I'm so thankful that you guys can see the vision of what these two little guys want. And I say these things, I'm very thankful for the opportunity to speak to you, and I have a lot of respect for you guys. And I'd like to close, thank you.[1056.22][1056.22](APPLAUSE)
Good evening, council. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Really, really, really thank you. And the reason that I'm thanking you is because on the 2010-12 circulation plan, this is how many years ago? It was already impacted at this area, 176 in the red at a level, at a level of Service F. If we open this up, it's one more log into the log jam, well, more logs into the log jam. But the best thing I heard tonight was when Councilman Rodriguez said that if we take this off, it helps the developers that want to come in and help Oceanside grow, hopefully smartly, that they're, they're not using something that's obsolete in their mitigation plans. So thank you, Councilman Rodriguez. Thank you, Councilman Keim for your second, and thank you, Esther, for always supporting this. Good night.[1122.01][1122.01](APPLAUSE)
My name's Lee Kelly Gillan, and I live in an unincorporated spot that is not in Oceanside. So good news, I can't vote for or against any of you. But this project impacts my life daily. I've lived there for 40 years. I ride my horse two to time, two to three times a week in Jeffrey's in Guahomi, and I see kids like these behind me who spoke. This is like deja vu all over again. It's like whack-a-mole. It's been going on for years and years. And it, we couldn't, the city couldn't afford it in 2008. Can you afford it in 2019? And then it is just morally reprehensible to think that the council's considering eminent domain again. Homeowners and businesses have been put in limbo for over 20 years while they await their fate at the whim of one or two councilmen and developers every five to seven years. It doesn't make financial, ethical, environmental, or transportation sense to destroy sensitive parklands, relocate families at an enormous financial cost to the taxpayer for a 3,000-foot shortcut for $42 million. And we really appreciate you, Councilman Rodriguez, for coming to some of the meetings, and you, Councilman Keim, for seconding, and then Esther, always for your support. Thank you.[1211.01][1211.01](APPLAUSE)
I'm going to make this really quick. Thank you. Seeing those two little guys, now I'm going to cry. I'm not kidding. That was amazing. And they have public service written all over them. But anyway, yeah, moving this permanently, I hope there's a way to do that. I, I know people who live up there. It's been hanging over their head forever. And if they could take it off permanently and unencumber those properties, that would be a service to them, once and for all. As far as the $6 million, I support Bob Nelson and his plan to widen Santa Fe. It's my understanding that the Melrose Heights project is going to come down and widen Melrose. So once it gets to Santa Fe, if you widen it out, put a couple of double-stack right-hand turn lanes on there, we could do that to 76, probably with less than the $6 million. So if you really want to mitigate the traffic sooner in an expedient manner with less environmental impact and a future for kids in the park and the horses, I appreciate you considering that as well. Thank you very much.[1290.01][1290.01](APPLAUSE)
Being no one else, we'll come back to the council. Councilmember Feller?
Thank you. Just a little history. The most, all of these roads were in a circulation element long before most all of us were here. The Melrose Road was initially supposed to go from the back gate of Camp Pendleton all the way to where it ends up down in La Costa, across, even coming across the river. The, the, the only harm in taking this out is, I think, safety. The, the park is, I mean, we were told this afternoon that the park would actually be larger by expanding with some of the, the ways of moving properties around. But that's not really an issue at this point because it's, the, the council wants to remove this forever. So, so I'm going to tell you what else they've removed. They've removed connections to Rancho Del Oro and 78. So all the roads are impacted. College, colleges is impacted every single day with 50 mile-an-hour speeds where houses front college. It's not particularly safe. Rancho Del Oro is, was given, all, all of that development in the industrial area was given the notice that there would be an interchange at Rancho Del Oro and 78 to expedite their exit out of their industrial area. Carlsbad took Cannon Road out of their circulation element, and so everybody's slowly getting landlocked. And as the mayor said, it's, it will impact safety. The Melrose Extension is, or would have been, another way out of your property. Jeffrey's Ranch is, you, you only have the option of going out to Highway 76. Jeffrey's Ranch Road and the, the connection is, is probably a no-go in any form as, according to the, the discussions I've had. I would, I would say that these young people have a great place if they're able to use that park regularly. That's, that's a terrific park. I'm, I just think this impacts a lot more people. The survey I did is not as confined to the, the area in Guahomi Park area as the survey I did was a long time ago, 10 years ago. And that survey said that other people in Oceanside, the other neighborhoods that, you know, they don't want more, more traffic on their roads. They were building, they're, they're satisfied with the, the way Oceanside's roads are going to, I mean, they have to be satisfied that the, the, the gridlock will be on other roads. So I'm not going to fight the, the feeling here. I, I just, I think it's a, a bad decision, but I've made bad decisions before, so.[1565.41][1565.41](LAUGHTER)
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yeah, thank you, everybody. I just wanted to restate the motion, just so it's clear. The, the word Melrose Extension has been being used loosely, which I understand. But again, this is direction to staff to repair an amendment to the circulation element of the general plan to remove, burn, sear, whatever you want to call it, the Melrose Extension from North Santa Fe Drive to Spur Avenue, that portion of the extension to get rid of.
Please vote. Yeah, across the river. Across the river.[1603.01][1603.01](APPLAUSE) Thank you. Thank you, appreciate it. Mullen, item 29, please.
Item 29 is the adoption of an ordinance of the city council of the city of Oceanside amending Article 14, Section 14 and 14.1 of the Oceanside Traffic Code by the addition and changes of various subsections to establish various speed limits on various streets.
Move adoption.
We have a speaker on this item?
Yeah.
Jimmy Knott?
Mayor, councilmembers, Jimmy Knott, 127, Sherri Lang. I want to inform you that the meeting of the SouthO business merchants and public last night, they were disappointed that you did not take our needs for public safety or even consideration of recommendation to staff to study our needs for public safety, considering a 25 miles per hour speed limit in SouthO in crosswalks. I wanted to inform you of our great disappointment in your non-action. Thank you.
Motion in a second, please vote. Motion approved, 5-0. Mr. Mullen?
Item 30 is the adoption of an ordinance of the city council of the city of Oceanside adopting ZA 160007 with California Commission suggested modifications.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Move adoption.
Please vote. So before we adjourn, I have been asked to close this meeting in honor of one Barbara Regal Wayne, and also for Marvin Foster and Charles Adams. So if we could, please have a moment of silence for them.
Charles Adams?
Yeah.
Thank you very much, and we will stand adjourned until Wednesday, April 10.